The May 14th, 2020 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Before we go to our public hearings, which we have five today, although it's not on the agenda, I'd just like to take a moment of special privilege, if I may, to wish a happy birthday to Mr. Trivett. It's not often that birthdays coincide with council meetings. And also acknowledge this is a year anniversary since the day he was appointed interim city manager. So, Mr. Trivett, thank you for all you do and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we'll move on to the public hearings, the first four of which relate to the budget. I think we're actually all five. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The first one we have is about the Community Development Block Grant. Ms. Shelton, with the four hearings related to the budget, should we hold each of those individually?
You can take them together as long as you make it clear that the public hearing is for the purpose of all of the matters.
Okay. I'd like to let anybody know who may be calling in or watching from home and wishes to speak to any of the items today. The time to call in would be now because if you're listening on your phone, there's a different, there's a lag time between what it's like watching on the internet as opposed to listening on your phone. So, we encourage anybody to call in now. And we will move to the first public hearing, which is a public hearing on application for Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Virginia Funding Opportunities for COVID-19 Response. Mr. Trivett, will you be handling this?
I think Mr. Witt is going to do the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Witt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is the second of two public hearings that are required for us to apply for Community Development Block Grant funding from the state. The state is, has changed the Community Development Block Grant program under COVID-19 to get money on the street to help our low to moderate income citizens in this situation. Our application is to provide emergency non-congregate housing in three meals a day for unsheltered and homeless population. The second thing we would use the money for is emergency rental assistance for low to moderate income individuals and families temporarily residing in motels who are at risk of homelessness due to a reduction in income. Thirdly, we're purchasing produce and unprepared food to deliver to low to moderate income households in the city. And we're using a nonprofit for that food distribution. In addition to that, we're still talking with the state about how to use these funds to help our businesses with job retention or business support during COVID-19. Those conversations are still ongoing. As of this morning, they've told us they'll have more information next week to share with us about that. But we want to include that in the public hearing so we are able to access those funds when and if they become available. Our total request is for $165,203 to cover these costs that I mentioned. And we've been, we've been incurring these costs since March 12th, but the state has said that these funds can be used to reimburse the city for these costs. And these, these grant funds would be used through June 30th of 2020. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Witt?
None for me.
Well, I, just two really quick questions, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, thank you for your presentation again. I know we've discussed this in the prior city council meeting, but just to clarify, this is a reimbursement purpose. So, this is something we are already doing and it's not straining our general fund. This is something that we, the city, had thought of doing. It would be nice to receive this reimbursement if we, if our application is accepted, right?
Well, these were unexpected costs that we are incurring because of COVID-19. But yes, we are able to cover those now. But we're looking forward to state assistance to help reimburse and continue those costs.
Thank you. And my final question is, what's the timeline again? With, when are we expected to hear back? If you can shed any insight on that. Thank you.
I wish I could. The briefing package is being, being done by the state and has to be sent to the governor's office. And they're going to let us know as soon as they can, but they do not know when that will be. They also are not sure when they'll be able to give us clarification on using them for business assistance. But we talk with them several times every week and we'll let you know as soon as we hear.
Well, from what I hear is that the application is a very lengthy process. So, thank you for carrying that forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions for Ms. Witt?
I have no questions.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody on the line, Mr. Barr?
No, sir.
Ms. Felico, do we, did we receive any comments on this public hearing?
Not on this matter.
Okay. Not seeing anybody else call in. We'll close the public hearing. We've already taken action on this. That's correct, Ms. Witt?
Yes, sir. You've already passed a resolution. So, this action today, or this public hearing today does not require action from you. Just your minutes will show that the public hearing was held.
Great. Well, thank you. This takes us to the next four public hearings, which we will take all at once because they all relate to the budget. They are the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Fiscal Year 21 Budget, Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Fiscal Year 21 Effective Tax Levy, Public Hearing Regarding The Proposed Increase To The Cigarette Tax Rate, and Public Hearing Regarding The Proposed FY21 Utility Rate And Budget. Mr. Trivett, anything you'd like to start off with here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. I know that at the last budget presentation, there were a couple of questions from council and some emails exchanged. I think we answered most of the questions via email in terms of the data that we shared, but I didn't want to just pass on some of that to the public. So, I'm going to share my screen for just a second. So, this is the slide that we showed you during the budget presentations concerning the proposed increase in the cigarette tax. It's the only tax that the city staff is proposing to increase in the coming fiscal year. As you can see there, what we're proposing is to go from 30 cents to 50 cents, an addition of 20 cents per pack. We did want to point out that, as you can compare here in the chart, our rate is still lower than most of the surrounding localities that are able to charge a rate. Counties right now are not able to levy a rate on cigarettes. However, there was a bill in the General Assembly this past year that gives them that authority, but it doesn't take effect until July. So, they're not able to set that tax rate until next July, at which time I anticipate the counties surrounding us will likely adopt their own version of a cigarette tax. I can't tell you how much that will be, but I can assume that it would be proximate to the rates that are being charged around them, up to the limit that's allowed by the law. And that brings us to another point. The bill that was passed also includes, includes a cap generally on the price per pack that can be charged. The net effect of that is that it will likely impact this revenue stream for us, not this coming fiscal year FY21, but in FY22. So, it's likely that we will have to do some type of an adjustment to our rate, or at least to our revenue projections in FY22, should the council decide to pass the cigarette tax increase proposed. So then, I wanted to share some other things. If you'll bear with me just a second while I switch to those. Might get screen sharing fatigue. But I wanted to show this data point, is that one of the questions was on the history of the city's tax rates. Ms. Dameron, who I believe is on the meeting today, she put together this, this table that outlines the tax rate back to 1978. Obviously, I can scroll down and show you all the way up to current. But it does get rather boring after 1991 in terms of tax rate because it stayed the same for quite some time. But I believe the question was related to, what has the tax rate been? Was there a period of time that it was actually reduced? The answer, I think, is yes. And you can see that here in the table. She went the next step further, as Barbara Dameron always does, and put on the assessed values and some of the revenue lines so that you could begin to draw a correlation between the action that was taken, whether it was increase in the tax rate or a decrease in the tax rate relative to what was happening in terms of the revenue that the city was realizing from the other sources of income. So, I hope that was helpful to council. Just to reiterate, the city staff is not proposing a, a real estate tax rate increase in this coming fiscal year. But we do anticipate a modest 3% increase in the assessed value of the city, which most residents, the average resident, will feel in their tax bill that comes.
Are you looking for more information, Mr. Trivett?
Yes, sir. I had one more thing I wanted to show you.
Hey Drew, while you're looking, can Derek just talk about how that assessment revaluation happens in terms of, is this a general across the board? Or is he looking at certain neighborhoods?
Sure. Derek, can you answer that question, please?
Sure. Good afternoon, Board, the Council, pardon me. We look at each neighborhood and we take all the collected neighborhoods and look at what's sold in those neighborhoods. So, there are times where you have neighborhoods that are going to go down. And of course, you're going to have some neighborhoods that are going to go up. But it's definitely at the neighborhood level. And I looked at stats, one of the statistics that we do to kind of trend, I look at things and how activities are doing in each quarter. So, if you look at the first quarter, which was basically the first four, three months after we published the reassessment, we're at 96.5%. Second quarter, 97. Third quarter, 94.3. And just the last quarter, which is probably the most surprising, is you would think with COVID-19, but actually, our values are getting further away from market. The last quarter, we're at 88.5%. So, those projections at 3% are as of what has sold up until April 1st.
And Mr. Green, just for clarification for anybody who might be watching at home, that percentage is derived from the value of the assessment as a percentage of the, what the comparable sale of that property would be. So, if it's at 88%, it means the assessment is at 88% of what the value of the home likely is in the, in the market.
Correct.
And then Derek, could you explain the, some of the challenges on assessments are, you know, land without building improvements and how you've been able to catch up on some of that, especially in the downtown area?
Sure. One of the things that you do is, when you first set your rates, you kind of work off this cost concept where you take a brand new house and you cost it out. And then you sort of go into those neighborhoods that are improved where there are no land sales. And you're making sure that all your data is correct. That's the key word is scrubbing your data to make sure your sales are accurate. And then you can see, once you plug in that improvement value and then add in that land value and how is that matching up to what actually sold? That kind of gives you a hint to where you have land issues in neighborhoods where there are no land activity. We've been fortunate in the last calendar 18 months where we've had actually pretty decent land sales, even in the city center, I should say, the last two years. But there are a lot of neighborhoods citywide where we've had some land activity. One sale wasn't necessarily one, you don't want to go chasing one sale, if you will. So, you're really looking at that model to calibrate it, to look at those improvement sales and that distribution to make sure it's equitable. Thanks. Sure.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Trivett.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Derek, for that explanation. So, the, the other thing I wanted to share is, we had some questions and a little bit of confusion, I believe, on the staff's proposed increases on some building permit fees. So, not the building permit costs themselves, but the fees that are associated with some of the actions that are taken. So, we had some questions about what we're currently charging. We shared what I am showing you now on the screen, which is sort of a breakdown of the average commercial project, 5,000 square feet and $300,000 cost valuation, which impacts how the, the permit value is calculated. And as you can see how our cost breaks out, we're not the, the lowest in the region, of course, but still a fairly reasonable permit rate, especially given the services provided. Very often, the comments that we get back on our building permit process is that it is the best in the region. It moves very quickly. We're very responsive. And much of that credit goes to the building official, Matt Westheimer, and to Carolyn Murphy from Managing Department. So, we wanted to share that. And then, to clear up the confusion, as I said, we're not proposing to increase the valuation determination for building permits and sales. What we are proposing to do is increase the fees, very often considered to be penalty fees, associated with a building project. Because we're seeing some disturbing trends in terms of how builders are pulling permits or not pulling permits, as the case may be, and also utilizing our staff in the field as de facto foremen or inspectors. And that's really not the function that they serve. So, the first one is that we propose to increase the reinspection fee from $40 to $100. And so, this is the fee that's charged if the inspector has to come out to your job for the same inspection twice. And the typical reasons for an inspector to have to come out twice would be, they get there and the work that was supposed to have been done is not done. Very often, a builder will schedule that inspection on the hope that they get it done in time. And then we get there and it's a wasted trip because the work isn't done. Or they get there and find that the work wasn't done correctly, which again, is not the responsibility of our inspector in the field. Very often, the commercial jobs, they have a foreman on, on the site and it's the foreman's job to discover those errors in his inspections or her inspections and to make sure that they're on schedule with the inspection that's been called in. Then the second fee that we would like to increase is the work without a permit fee. Right now, that fee is $35 and we would propose increasing that to $250. What we are seeing in the field is that very often builders are pulling, not pulling permits. And then, when they are discovered, either because the, the inspector happens to drive by the site or a neighbor calls in the complaint, that they're informed by the builder that because the fee is so low, it's better to run the risk of asking for forgiveness versus permission. And so, they can avoid the costly inspection process and having to build the project to code, which inherently has the necessary cost of meeting all the safety requirements in state building code. And then the final inspection or fee that we'd like to increase is the rental inspection, reinspection fee. So, as you know, we have a rental program. We do an inspection as part of that program. Right now, the way it works is you pay a $50 permit fee and that fee includes the first inspection. We come out, we inspect the property. If everything meets all of the safety codes that we're looking for and you're compliant with zoning code, then you receive the permit for, for the period of time. But very often, our inspector has to go more than once. And right now, there's no additional fee for the number of times we may have to visit the property. So, we may have to visit for all kinds of reasons, primarily because the tenants weren't ready for the visit. We get there and there are violations that need to be corrected. All of those issues amount to additional workload. And so, we'd like to start recouping some of that cost. We provided in the chart the breakdown of how those fees compare to neighboring jurisdictions. Of course, not everyone has a rental inspection program. So, it's difficult to compare those, but we did the best that we could. And then at the bottom of the file that we shared, we had a comparison of the residential building permit fee. And so, for this one, we did sort of your standard 2,000 square foot home with a $300,000 valuation. And we just costed that out in terms of pulling the permit and, and the cost that you would pay at the counter to have that permit issued. So, hopefully, that was helpful to council. Carolyn Murphy is at the meeting today and we are happy to answer any questions regarding the permit fees.
Any questions for Mr. Trivett on anything he's presented? Or Ms. Murphy on the fee? Yes, Mr. Maslin?
Two questions. In terms of our inspectors, you know, many of the other larger jurisdictions have, you know, multiple trade inspectors that have to come out for each type of trade inspection. Because we're smaller, do we have more generalist inspectors that can be inspecting multiple trades on that, that one trip?
Yes, we have combination inspectors who can do the multiple trades.
And, and that's a great advantage for, for a builder and owner to, to be able to have that happen.
Yes, it is.
The second one is, we know that other jurisdictions have a challenge with inspections during COVID and they're resorting to virtual inspections or maybe more reliance on third-party inspectors. How, how are we doing along that line?
We're doing really well with that. We're doing all the new construction inspections with the inspectors. We're doing the inside inspections of single-family dwellings by having the individual video, the inspection we need to see. So, we actually go to the site. They show us, they email us the video. We look at it. We determine if it beats code or not, or if it's something we can't see properly. We'll have them go back in and video a specific thing that we want to see more so. And then the inspector looks at that and makes the determination and either passes or fails the inspection based on it. So, we're doing really well with that. We're averaging somewhere between 20 and 30 and sometimes 35, 40 inspections a day. And the inspectors are, are handling it very well and, and they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And how many of those, Carolyn, have you required a reinspection? I know virtual is a little bit different than in person, but have you had to do a reinspection?
Very few have been requiring reinspections. We've been able to see, see them pretty, pretty good with the virtual stuff. And for new construction like Midtown Road and the apartments and the conversion of apartments for, on Parkway Drive, the inspectors are actually going in and doing the inspections onsite. What, what we require is that no one's in the, the building, in the area of the building that they inspect. So, they go and do their inspection. If they have any questions, then they come out and talk to the, the contractor and then they resolve any issues they may have or go back in and look at it. So, it's been working really well so far.
Sorry to jump in, Ms. Mayor. I had a couple of questions if it were okay to, to go ahead.
Sure. Do you want to ask those before we do the public hearings?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Sure. I just, I know that we skipped Doug and I didn't want to go out of order. But Carolyn, one thing that Drew had mentioned, let me just say from the outset, thank you, Drew, and staff for pulling all of this together. I think it's answered a lot of questions. I did have just a few more. But for Carolyn, you know, with, with Drew's comment about commercial projects and requiring a foreman, fine, I get that because these are big scale projects and I don't really find an excuse if they could have a foreman to be able to do all the work that we otherwise would have had to do. So, that makes sense. But for residential properties, I mean, maybe this is just my lack of understanding from a construction world. But it's, with smaller scale projects, I don't really think there's a foreman unless if that's just the contractor himself. So, if there were problems with, you know, requiring a reinspection, how the city staff approached that? Or I guess the question is, do you really do see more, you know, reinspection visits for residential versus commercial?
We see it in both of them. And what, what we've seen is that there's certain individuals and contractors and so forth who think, who, who will take the chance of not getting the permit because it's quicker for them and they can get in and out without getting the permit for reinspections. What we're finding for commercial projects and residential, because most residential is, is being done by a contractor, that we are being used basically as their foreman to make sure the, the work gets done. And for, you know, when we make our initial inspection, we give you a list of the deficiencies. So, when you call back in for the second inspection, you should just have the checklist there. Check, I've done this and so forth. And what we're finding is that's not happening and we're having to go out and make multiple inspections, which is taking up a lot of time for the three inspectors that we have. And the same thing falls for the rental inspections. You know, when we do our initial rental inspection, we give you a punch list if you have any things that need to be corrected. So, the next time we come back out, that punch list, when you call us to tell us to come back out, should be taken care of. And what we're finding in is it's taken us two, three, and sometimes more than three inspections for, for that punch list to get completed and the property being able to be, meet the code requirements. So, this is, if, if the increases help, it'd help in such a way that I think that people will take it more serious and not use us as the means to get their punch list checked off. And the hopes is, they don't have to come back for reinspections that...
And I think that's, I think that's important, that you're shedding this info. And something that Drew had not mentioned, but that he had the ready brief counsel on is that you have the discretion to, I guess, waive fees or not. So, it's not like, you know...
That's right.
That may be the second time, but maybe it is. But it's more like the third, fourth, fifth time, you've already given all you can and you're just like, come on, man, just, just do it, right?
That's correct. And if it's a homeowner who didn't know that something was required or needed, the building official always has the opportunity to waive any of the fees. And we do that if, if there are circumstances that warrant it.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. And Drew, just to, to ask real quick, I know you've put this up in the public here, in the, in the public meeting today, but if there's any way that you would entertain the idea of maybe posting some of the, the presentation slides you've had today in our budget, the city's budget link for folks to see? Don't know if you'd be opposed to that, but just wanted to at least put that out. One thing I did want to say, and I appreciate Barbara Dameron putting it up, was not necessarily focused on the idea of the real estate tax increase. I guess my question was during, I was trying to pinpoint towards the Great Recession and kind of seeing a little bit of the years before and after and maybe even during to see if the city had set the precedent, maybe set, you know, well, I guess now a lot of its move, but, you know, raising certain fees or tax rates during those times where we experienced economic hardship in terms of the general economy, not, not necessarily the city's economy. But I think it is really helpful and I appreciate it if you, if, if you entertain the idea of maybe publishing it. But obviously, that's your call. But this was all really helpful and that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Anybody else? Mr. Pons, did you want to ask a question?
I did. If I go back to cigarette tax, I know that several years ago, we had gone up to the 30 cents and we had gotten some feedback from some of the vendors who asked us not to do it because they're, in their opinion, they would lose demand, sales would go down. Do we have any indication or any way of knowing, Mr. City Manager, if volume declined as a result of that tax increase?
I don't know that, that, I'll let Barbara answer, but I don't know that she looked back to see if there was a noticeable decline around that timeline. I do know that with what we have proposed, we expect that, and she'll correct me if I get the number wrong, but approximately $80,000 is the budgetary impact associated with the increase that we're proposing. And that represents an amount that's been reduced to accommodate for a little bit less purchase volume as a result of the increase. I think that most localities that raise these types of taxes, what they see is there might be a slight decrease in the volume for a short period of time. But then after a while, it sort of goes back to what it was before.
Yeah. And I can totally see that. As I, I think I said during that last public hearing when we raised taxes, back when I was a hotelier, I would have employees that would walk past the Williamsburg Convenience Store into the York County Convenience Store to buy their cigarettes. But also, which was lost was the exundery sales of, you know, a bag of chips and a lunch and that type of thing. So, while I'm supportive of seeing a decline in cigarette sales just from a health standpoint and because it has a, a financial impact on the communities, I don't want to see us do damage to our, our city businesses that, that sell these cigarettes.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm sorry. I know that collecting cigarette taxes, it's a cooperation between your office, perhaps Finance, and the Commission for Revenue and there's cigarette stamps involved with it. So, do you mind walking us through that process of how it's collected and...
Sure. I'll do, I'll do my best. So, the, the way that cigarette sales work in the state of Virginia, each cigarette pack has to have a stamp. The stamps are sold by the localities to the vendors. Very often, localities will buy the stamps in bulk from the state. And it, it's actually a fairly serious violation of ATF laws to sell the, the cigarettes without the stamps. It's an interesting enterprise that involves counterfeit stamps. I mean, it, it really is a whole nother level of discussion. But in our case, we have bought stamps in bulk that will have to be discarded. The total cost to the city for discarding those stamps, I believe, is estimated at around $5,000. I know that Ms. Dameron spoke with Commissioner Revenue about this. So, Ms. Dameron, do you have responses to Mr. Pons that you want to share? And also talk to us about the, the tax, the stamp process?
Sure. I did not look back to the last time it was increased to see if there was a notable decrease. I will say that that revenue in the current year was, is, is trending toward... I will say that that revenue in the current year was, is, is trending toward, uh, or exceeding the budget. However, I did reduce it by about twenty-five percent, thinking that, you know, there may be some, um, some decline or, or people going elsewhere possibly is, um, at least for a short time period as a result of the increase. In regards to the way that these are sold, typically a business will come in and buy, um, the stamps in bulk. And so those would have to be recalled is of July, uh, first. And in addition, there is a supply that we, uh, think is valued at around five thousand dollars that would have to be discarded and new stamps issued. And of course refunds given for what they've already bought and they'd have to repurchase. There is a, on the form that they fill out, if I believe it's some certain quantity that they purchase, if they purchase a whole roll, and I can't quite remember how much, how many stamps are on, on a roll, they do get a discount. I want to say it's about a four percent discount to the businesses. Does that answer your questions in regards to the, the process?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
I just add as commentary, it's, it's too bad that those stamps can't be used in the same manner as postage stamps. Whereas if you bought a roll of fifty cent stamps, to supplement the, the cost of the increase of mailing, you, you buy, you know, four cent stamps or whatever the postage rate is now. Obviously the state governs this and they're taking advantage of the opportunity to, to replace those stamps that never get used.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of these topics?
I just have one question and not to belabor the, the cigarette tax thing. So I understand that any stamps would have to be recalled that are out there with vendors. But is it typical for them to put stamps on packages of cigarettes much before they sell them? So that an old stamp would be on a pack of cigarettes still in the, in their inventory? And what do you do with that?
I, I'm not sure of that process, but I would imagine that they do place stamps on those cigarettes. Um, and I would think that those would have to be replaced. But I can verify that information and report back.
Okay. And, and I had one other question back to the reinspection fee for rental inspections. Drew, I think you commented that often an inspector has to go out multiple times. So would each reinspection then incur a fee of seventy-five dollars?
I believe that's the intent, but I want Carolyn to answer.
Yes, that's correct. That's the answer.
And right now we don't charge anything for a reinspection. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Felico, do you have anything you'd like to read into the record that we might have received in advance?
Yes, Mayor, I do. The first item is from Robert Toby Lane at two forty-eight Yorkshire Drive. His comments read as follows. I am generally supportive of the city manager's proposed FY twenty and FY twenty-one budgets. I think the conservative evaluation of the pandemic effect is a reasonable approach. I do not think it was a good thinking to dip into and diminish that conservatism in parentheses, one million dollar small business at this early stage. My sense is that these intended conservative evaluations will prove to be barely or not enough, and we should protect what we can as long as we can until we can see the reality more clearly. Number one, I do not agree with keeping our school funding at the proposed dollar amount despite what JCC and the school administration do. I think we should maintain our percentage contribution as we typically do. Number two, I suggest we immediately cease all funding related to the second fire station. My sense is that a second fire station was mostly a nice to have rather than a need and under the current situation should be deferred indefinitely. I would support using any reasonable funding to upgrade the existing station. Number three, I do not think we should encourage CW to find alternative ways to use their one point three million dollars if the current plans do not happen. I like the change to specific expenditures, but to encourage finding ways to spend money if it can't be spent as originally agreed or allocated seems poor fiscal and fiduciary responsibility on our part. Number four, I've spoken before about the culture fix funding and all those seeing the number in print still causes me some angst. I am okay for it to be tied to contracted specific deliverables and funding. Number five, I'm not sure I fully understand the discussion about adding the maintenance inspector position and raising fees, but I support paying more attention to maintenance issues and also support a fee structure that at least comes close to covering service costs. End of comments. The next is a letter that was received from NATO, N A T O. And it reads as follows. Dear Mayor Friling, Vice Mayor Pons, Council Members Maslin, Ramsey and Zhang, as the Executive Director of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, or known as NATO, a national retail trade association that represents more than sixty thousand retail stores throughout the country, including several Williamsburg retail store members. I am writing to submit our comments and concerns regarding the proposed budget item on your May fourteenth, twenty twenty agenda to increase the local tax on cigarettes from thirty cents per pack to fifty cents per pack, a sixty-seven percent increase in the tax rate. During the current national emergency caused by the coronavirus pandemic, we believe that it would be inappropriate for a local government to move forward and enact a sixty-seven percent tax increase on one legal product. This is especially true when employees of retail stores that sell food, groceries and beverages have been designated by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security as essential workers for critical infrastructure and should remain working to provide basic necessities to the public and that the governor of the Commonwealth has declared food and beverage businesses, gas stations and convenience stores as essential retail businesses and has generally extended his orders to June tenth, twenty twenty. How can retailers meaningfully participate in a public hearing on taxing products they sell with a stay-at-home order in place, especially at a time when they have been tasked with ensuring the needs of the public are met? An ordinance increasing taxes on tobacco products is not an essential action item for the city council to consider now. We respectfully ask that this matter be postponed until late, until state stay-at-home restrictions have been lifted so that affected retail stakeholders may meaningfully participate in a hearing on an ordinance that may very well be the final burden on them to cause some of them to close. Please remember that the Virginia legislature just passed legislation, which was signed by the governor doubling the state's cigarette tax rate and the excise tax rate on all other tobacco products. This sixty-seven percent increase in Williamsburg's local tax will exacerbate the issues of residents traveling to nearby cities to buy cigarettes and at the same time purchase gasoline, grocery items and beverages. The retailers in Williamsburg will be at a greater disadvantage and lose sales of not only cigarettes, but these other products. With the average convenience store relying on tobacco product sales for approximately thirty-six percent of in-store sales, further raising taxes on these products may force stores out of business and leave a further void in the public's need for stores that sell food and beverages. This is particularly ironic given that these stores have been deemed essential by federal and state governments. What purpose is served to the general public of adopting policies that will likely drive many of these essential outlets for food, beverages and sundry items out of business? We do not doubt that the current situation has caused budgetary issues for the city of Williamsburg, but why choose cigarette smokers who are disproportionately lower income persons to bear this burden when the budget issue is a more general one that all Williamsburg citizens should bear? We urge the Williamsburg City Council not to move forward with any attempt to raise the local tax on cigarettes and to certainly not even consider making any such changes under the existing state of emergency we find ourselves. Sincerely, Thomas A. Bryant, NATO Executive Director. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Felico. And we do not appear to have anybody on the line waiting to speak. We'll wait just one more moment in case somebody's calling in at the last second. Seeing no one else calling in, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, remind my colleagues that we will not be voting on the budget today. Uh, this, today's purpose was to hold the public hearing, but at this point, if you would like to have additional conversation now is amongst ourselves, now is the time to do that. So I'll start with you, Mr. Pons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess just a couple of things. I, I know it's not a lot of money, but, um, with regards to the cigarette tax, um, it does seem like a hefty jump. Um, and I wonder if we could consider going up to forty cents. And I think given where the state is and their, their, um, probably eventuality of, of raising the tax on the cigarette, which ultimately may trigger us to have to come back and revisit that. I think, you know, maybe if we stay in that forty percent range, uh, forty cent range, might be something we ought to consider. In terms of schools, uh, I know we had some discussions on, uh, going ahead to, to fully fund the, the superintendent's budget. But I think in light of where we are with our relationship with James City County, I think it's probably prudent that we stay, uh, in line with James City County, which ultimately will, will match what the school board's going to, to present as their budget. So those are the two items that I, I think we ought to, that I wanted to share. But then going back to the permitting, um, you know, I think those fines are reasonable, you know. In the last couple of years, I've, I've personally gone through hundreds of, of inspections, sometimes some reinspections and, and staff has always been very gracious and helpful. And typically on time. Um, and it is a lot of work, you know. When they show up at my place to, to do an inspection, they, you know, they were in a time crunch because they had to get to another one. And so, um, having to, to do work twice because of, um, the lack of attention of, of a contractor or property owner, uh, isn't fair to city staff. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I concur with the Vice Mayor on his previous statements. I just wanted to add, uh, my appreciation to staff for clearing up, what I had misread at first, the draft budget of what, uh, those particular fees are. And again, just to, to reiterate, you know, the only, there's nothing wrong with raising fees, you know. I guess the way that I've been framing it is scrutinizing it narrowly to ensure, why are we doing this now? What's the compelling purpose? Uh, and how does this fulfill the core services, the core services that the citizens of Williamsburg deserve? Obviously there is an overarching public policy in trying to discourage folks that take advantage. And to, uh, Mr. Lane's previous comments, we should be able to find a way to compensate service costs that we previously didn't have. So I'm on board with that. And, uh, I appreciate again, just wanted to extend that appreciation for the, you know, to the city staff for making that, you know, in terms of a, a, a public, uh, I guess a clarification of what that meant, uh, in the draft budget. I would also encourage, uh, staff and I, I think Mr. Mayor and I had some conversation about this in the last work session about what in particular positions, you know, in that particular slide where, uh, the city manager had outlined all the spending priorities that we were going forward with. Rather than being nitpicky, I guess I would challenge staff to, to consider, you know, what with, based on some of the current spending or proposed spending priorities, no doubt that they're all spending priorities. It's just like what we're doing with the CIP. Everything's important with it, but some of it we're just going to defer down the way. And perhaps maybe I'm just kind of, uh, maybe just speaking to myself because maybe there is an overarching importance to that. I'll let staff make that call, but I guess my only point was that, you know, seeing some of the, the positions on the slide and some of the spending priorities, I almost asked myself, now what, what compelling need does that fulfill now? And what could be pushed maybe later to an assessment, uh, which I know that the city, this is going to be after I get off council. But when they do their mid-year review, maybe they can pick up some of the spending priorities based on some of the numbers, the revenue numbers, actual realized numbers that we'll receive, so to better grasp, for us to better grasp an idea of how well we're doing financially. But again, it's an old moot point if there's a compelling justification to spend, to, to go forward with every single spending priority highlighted in that slide. I just wanted to challenge again staff to, to think through that. Um, and obviously it's not an easy call, but, uh, you know, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to staff for making the hard calls and, uh, answering some of my questions. Thank you.
So just to be clear before we go on, Mr. Zhang, there's not a particular position that you're questioning. It's just the concept of the additional positions. And your question of staff is, or request is that they go back and reevaluate and question themselves and make sure that each one of those is absolutely necessary. Is that fair?
Yes, sir. Yeah. I just feel like it would be inappropriate if I told, uh, directed staff or asked of staff which position was, you know, that's, I guess, a personnel issue. I, I guess from a policymaker's perspective, I just wanted to have that ten thousand foot down.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can respond to that just real quick, I, Mr. Zhang, thank you for that suggestion. The executive team in the city meets every day. So we certainly have that opportunity between now and adoption to go back and, and look at the list of positions and talk through why we need them. Just off the top of my head, none are jumping to mind that could be cut back on, but, uh, we will certainly have that conversation.
Right. And again, just to my point, I may be wrong, maybe there is a compelling justification, but, you know, I appreciate, be grateful of staff and the E-team, you know, reconsidered some of that, or just to, to discuss it further rather. Thank you.
Ms. Ramsey?
I just have a, a couple of things. One, on the fees, I think that, uh, that what's being proposed is commensurate with amount of time and effort that our inspectors put into their, to their job. And we're probably a little late to the party, so to speak, as far as enacting some of those. So I'm fine with that. As far as the cigarette tax, I appreciate the comments made in the, the letter, particularly the sixty-seven percent increase from whatever it is, thirty to fifty cents and would be in alignment with Vice Mayor Pons of trying to find a compromise between what it is now and, um, and what the proposal is. And as far as the schools, I, I value the relationship that we have with James City County and really feel that before we, we really decide one way or the other, that we see what their plan is in finality as well as the adjustment of the school board's budget. And I think it'd be helpful to address Mr. Lane's question about the fire station. I think there's some thought out there that money is currently being spent or that the money that is allocated towards the fire station could be used or transferred to the general fund. And, um, I think the public needs to know for sure that, that that money is sort of earmarked and, and cannot be shifted to take care of other requirements.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Trivett?
Yes, I can. Um, the, the funding, the funding that we have in place for a fire station project is restricted to the fire station. We borrowed the funds some years ago related to public safety projects, both the police station and the fire station. And we're, we're holding those monies until we're ready to take action on those projects. And they cannot be used to support the general fund.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Ramsey?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Maslin?
A couple of things on the construction fees, uh, and maybe Drew can put on his public works hat. You know, looking at construction projects, one of the biggest costs in terms of fees for a typical construction project in other jurisdictions could be, uh, the water and sewer connection fees and also per fixture, uh, plumbing fees. I don't think that in, when we compare that with other jurisdictions, I think we're very reasonable and I'm not sure we're charging those, right?
Well, we do, I, I, I'm not, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty. Barbara probably can, but I'm, I'm reasonably sure we are charging a connection fee. I don't know that when we do evaluation of a permit, we're charging a per fixture fee. I think we're just doing evaluation of the work.
Right. And that's a, that's a big deal if you're doing a multi-family project. Those fixture fees really add up. And if we're not charging that, that's really an advantage to, to building in, uh, in Williamsburg. Carolyn, did you want to say something?
Yes, we do charge fixture fees. We do electrical fees, plumbing fees, mechanical fees. And yes, all of our fees are based on fixtures and so forth. So yes, So yes, we looked at those fees and thought they were in line also with other jurisdictions. So that's why we didn't propose any increase in those. But yes, we do look at fixture fees. And you are correct, that is quite a considerable amount of money, but especially for those multifamily projects.
Yeah. So I think the point is when you come to permit fees, those are fairly minimal compared to some of the other fees, right?
And and an example of that is right now, the reconstruction of the change from hotel to apartments over on Parkway Drive. My inspectors are there, I dare to say, every day for the last five or six weeks, making inspections every day. And it all ranges from not only the billing inspections, but the plumbing, mechanical and and electrical inspections for that whole project. So yes, there are, there are a lot of inspections in relationship to multifamily dwellings.
Yeah. Drew, in terms of the federal funds, the $1.3 million, are you going to talk about that in the city manager report?
I had not planned to talk about it today. We've got plenty of time to decide. So just to catch the public up, if you've not been following the news, the state released a tranche of CARES Act funding to local governments across the state. Based on population, the city of Williamsburg is going to receive, if we apply, a total of $1.3 million. And that money can be used to reimburse and fill needs related to COVID-19 mitigation. There are restrictions, of course, that apply. One of the things that we cannot do is fill budget revenue gaps. So what we can do is we can reimburse ourselves for costs associated with grants given to the community to offset loss on their end. But we can't offset our own loss associated with reduced tax revenues. So we've got a great opportunity here to recap, to recoup some of the costs that we've incurred already. And they are adding up, of course, especially as we continue to consider other things like public seating associated with expanding restaurant capacity, the daycare needs that we've talked about extensively, and various other expenses associated with PPE, thermometers, et cetera, et cetera.
So yeah, when we have that discussion, I'm thinking that there may be some opportunity to look at some of the school district's additional COVID-related costs that maybe are not being reversed by any direct federal programs to the school district, but we know that they're going to incur, especially related to janitorial, extra cleaning, looking at the HVAC systems, getting better air exchanges. Would you agree with that?
I think that's a fine idea. It's really going to be up to city council. The staff will provide a recommendation on what we think we should do with that funding. We do plan to apply for it. We can't find any reason not to. It appears not to restrict us from getting other funding opportunities that might come down or are currently available. So we'll continue to pursue those. I think, I think it is safe to say, although the conversation is sort of immature at the point, but I think it is safe to say that the staff recommendation for that money will include the first priority being reimbursing our own expense. And then after that, we can sort of decide discretionary spending of what's left.
And then look, following up on Mr. Zhang's comments on Monday about some of the positions and the questioning about the parking ambassadors. So I was a little concerned about that because we really haven't, I thought we rolled out a robust parking ambassador program, but really haven't seen any reports on that or an understanding as, you know, how has it increased the contact with people, you know, either by parking ambassadors walking or on bikes rather than just riding around in cars? But if I'm reading the budget book correctly, the headcount now for the parking staff, is it, is it really just two people?
It is two people. The city council approved, rewinding the tape, I think, three years now. The city council approved hiring at parking ambassadors. They work part-time based on a schedule. But what wasn't done was the budget was not adjusted to accommodate additional hours for those four people. So one of the reasons you've not seen a tremendous impact associated with it is because we've not been able to work them as much as we really need to. So that's the basis for Chief Dunn's request to increase the hours. He's confident that we've done significant training on what it means to be an ambassador and is prepared to roll out, I think, an effective program. It goes well beyond parking enforcement and really gets to the issue of being in the community and providing necessary information.
And then I think it was one or two meetings ago when Colony Williamsburg was giving their presentation. And we asked what responsibility they were going to take for maintenance of the public parking lots that they own. And they promised that they'd be coming to us with a program. And of course, that was pre-COVID-19. So I'm sure that's put on pause. But I would hope we'd want to actually understand what their plans are because if they have plans to actively manage more of these parking lots, maybe it reduces the need for increased parking staff.
I think that's a, that's a very good point. I do think that Colony Williamsburg intends to address their parking lots. But I think that that addressment, that whatever strategy they come up with will likely include a request to the city to consider continuing doing our enforcement in those lots. I think that what we will have to consider is how do we do that? Because it's likely, I'm not speaking for Colony Williamsburg, but I can tell you that if I were managing those parking lots, it would be difficult for me to invest in their improvement without also charging for parking to recoup the cost associated with that. And so I think one of the questions that we will have to answer is, is there a way for us to recoup our cost of enforcement from whatever they may be charging as part of that rate? Because that's all speculation on my part. We've not received anything official from Colony Williamsburg regarding their plans.
Okay, thank you.
Maslin, did you have any thoughts about the cigarette tax and Mr. Pons' counterproposal?
Well, one of my questions is, I'm not sure how many retailers we have in the city that sell cigarettes. I would think that they should not be very bashful about coming to us directly with comments. And maybe this is a good opportunity to remind everybody out there that who has comments for the budget that, you know, between meetings, it would be great if they could send us an email and that would be to citycouncil@WilliamsburgVA.gov, correct?
Yes.
So that's, that's all I had.
Okay. The one thing I want to, well, first, I would like to ask Mr. Trivett to think about if we went from a 20 cent increase in the cigarette tax to a 10 cent increase, that's a reduction of revenue. I don't know if it's 40,000 or something less than 40 because potentially we don't lose as much business from people going elsewhere, whatever that approximate number is. Anything we change on the revenue side, we have to change on the expense side. So I'm not looking for an answer right now. But if you could give some thought to how we would make that up, I think that would be worth looking at at this time. The comment I wanted to make relates to the the school funding, as some of my colleagues have addressed. And I too am sympathetic to James City County situation. And I'm, I know we're all sympathetic to the school system situation. We're very concerned about the quality of education that children in this community receive. And we want to do everything we can to ensure that their educational needs are met to the greatest capacity for us to do so. So the question is, what could we do with some additional money if we're not overly pressed financially that would still directly benefit children within the greater Williamsburg community? And so I would ask my colleagues to consider the possibility of asking staff to come up with a plan through Mr. Trivett, whether it's our human services department or our human services department in conjunction with maybe Parks and Rec has a role or there's a way to involve local nonprofits, where we could take some of this other money, invest it in services that we can provide directly to children and families within the city of Williamsburg. Some of them, and particularly looking at those who are the most vulnerable and potentially most disadvantaged if we go to a remote learning circumstance in the fall. We don't know that that's going to happen, but I think we all have to acknowledge that there's a potential for that. So if they could look at what are the challenges that children and families would face? Is there a way through city staff and potentially with the assistance of local nonprofits to directly impact the educational experience of our children? I think that would be a great way to spend the money that does not disrupt our contractual relationship with James City County. So I just throw that out for my colleagues' consideration.
So, you know, I think that's a fine idea. And just to be clear, I think what you're talking about is the difference between what we currently have budgeted and what we may ultimately end up with having to pay as a result of the contract. And so if that delta is $250,000, how do we deploy that money or a portion of that money into the community to help the students as you prescribed?
That's, that is exactly right.
Okay, good. I think that's a great idea, and I applaud your thinking on that.
Just to follow, well, I agree with the Vice Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think that's a fine idea, and I'm fine with it. Like to know a little bit more of the mechanisms moving forward, how that's implemented, but policy-wise, I'm on board.
And I would be in agreement of it as well, particularly to help those students, as you mentioned, who might be disadvantaged for whatever reason and be able to help them stay at the same level, particularly the younger ones with early intervention with some issues and problems that they might encounter.
Mr. Maslin, did you have a thought?
Well, I think this gives us the opportunity to wait and listen to our residents and have their input on this. I don't think we need to be making the decision right now. Also, I think we need an opportunity for the school district to actually gel the budget. And I think when we talk at the city manager's report, we'll see another component of funding for the school district, which will give another area where they're actually going to be losing money and they'll have to compensate for.
Well, Mr. Trivett, if you could begin conversations among staff to see if, as Mr. Zhang pointed out, this is not a plan, this is an idea. But if there's a way for you to have a conversation with other staff, department heads, and possibly people from outside the city who could help with advice about what are some of the more important things to look at and then be prepared when we're a little closer to the point where we're going to adopt the budget. And at some point, I assume you'll get back to us with what adjustment you feel might be appropriate if we did not raise the cigarette tax the full amount. Is that correct?
Right. So what we'll do is, over the next couple of weeks, the staff will put together some kind of an alternate plan for what could be done with the differential between what James City County's budget ultimately gets approved at and what we currently have budgeted for the school system. And that'll include looking at how we can send some of that money to human services to offset costs there and look at outside agency funding at the same time. So we'll come up with a plan for that. Cigarette tax is concerned, one of the questions I would ask is, can we use some of the school savings to offset the loss of that? What would, you know, just on the back of the neck and appears to be about $40,000 of revenue in that, in that plan that we would present?
I think it'd be good to give council members some time to think about that.
Okay.
And they could also be thinking about their own ideas, if they have some about, we don't want to get too much into departmental operations, but if they have some ideas on where they think spending could be reduced, that'll give them some time to consider that.
I think I've got some ideas already on what we can do to offset the $40,000 loss.
I agree with the mayor. I think we need to look at options. I don't like the optics of trading cigarette tax for less funding for schools.
Yeah, I think taking, it's like taking money away from children and supporting a sin tax. That's, I don't like those optics either.
So I think the whole thing is that there are just a lot of options and ideas to consider. And the more that we have, the more insight we can see how it would work. And we still don't know yet what James City County is going to do as far as their school budget yet. Is that correct?
That's right.
Do we know what the relative timelines of their budget adoption versus our budget adoption are? Will they adopt theirs before we adopt ours in June?
I have not looked at their meeting schedule. They typically do meet, I think, right before we do. So we will have a very short window, I think, to consider what they actually adopt, assuming that they adopted on their schedule.
Right.
But we'll have a better idea than we do now of what that's going to be, particularly related to the schools.
Right, right now, I'm expecting a 10% reduction.
Any other comments or questions on the budget issues? Okay, with that, we'll move on to reports. First is a monthly financial statement. Mr. Trivett, anything you want to highlight?
I think Ms. Dameron is going to give the financial report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. The city has a positive report for April despite some decreasing revenues as a result of the COVID-19 restrictions. But in terms, and to put that in context, in terms of the revised projection, which I believe Mr. Trivett will speak to later in the agenda, the impact to date has not been quite as severe as we had projected. I do want to point out that some of our revenue streams, particularly meals and room tax, we report on with a month lag. So the information reported on in April is for activity that occurred in March. So part of March, businesses were open without restrictions. And in the case of sales tax, we report on a two-month lag. So the information reported for sales tax is reflective of activity in February. But turning our attention to the general fund, total revenues is of April 30th are at 71% of budget, which is where we would expect to be at this point in time in the year. In terms of specific revenue streams, real estate tax revenue is at 57% of budget, again, where we would expect to be at this point in time in the year with the second half real estate tax not due until June 1st. Business, professional, and occupational license are at 96% of the budget, just slightly behind where we typically are at this point in the year. And of course, we'll continue to monitor that revenue stream. Personal property tax collections are in line with our budget expectation. And depending on whether you're looking at individual or business, somewhere between 99 and 98% of the budget. Room tax for the month of April shows a decrease of 68% compared with last year. And meals tax decreases 56%. However, the due dates for these were extended till May 1st. So it was at the end of April, we still have outstanding balances. Year-to-date, however, meals tax has decreased 5% compared to last year and is at 70% of the fiscal 2020 budget. And that's mainly due to the strong performance that we had prior to the COVID-19 crisis. Overall, the general fund expenditures are at 79% of budget. And that's just slightly less than the 80 to 82% that we would expect to be at at this point in time during the year. Looking at the sales tax fund, sales tax received in April decreased 17.6% compared to last year and is at 76% of the fiscal 20 budget, again, largely due to the strong sales that we had prior to the shutdown. The same holds true with sales tax in the tourism fund. Tax received in April decreased by 17.5% compared to last April. However, this year-to-date, it's at 80% of the fiscal 2020 budget. The $2 lodging tax, again, is going to show a significant decrease because we did delay that due date as well. So it was about 70% collections for April or about 70% less than April of 2019. And of course, this revenue stream has been steadily declining. So year-to-date, it's about 13.5% less than year-to-date last year. Utility fund is performing well in relationship to the budget. Water revenue is performing as expected. Sewer revenue is lagging behind the budget slightly. But then the sewer revenue is passed through to the But then the sewer revenue is passed through to the Hampton Roads Sanitation District. And so we would see an equal offset in the expenditure line for that idol. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. Questions for Ms. Dameron?
Real quick, Doug, do you have one? Ms. Dameron, so it's still a little too early, even though we're technically outperforming probably the worst-case scenario that you guys have laid out in the COVID-19 financial strategy, correct?
It could change. I'm very pleased, and particularly with the report that Mr. Trivet will give later. Our projections today were based on cash flow. But yes, we, you know, I'm very interested to see how May numbers come in. Did get an email from the schools because they were able to get some guidance on what the main sales tax number for schools would be. And then noticing it was much higher than I would have projected. So I think they're doing some research on that. But again, yes, we will have to monitor May and then June very closely.
So cautiously.
With the delays.
So cautiously optimistic.
Yeah, yes, I am.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, we'll move on to the monthly departmental operating reports. Mr. Trivet, anything you want to highlight?
I'm submitting for your review.
Any questions of Mr. Trivet? Yes, Mr. Maslin.
Drew, could you put on your public works hat again?
I'm trying, although I didn't get the last question right, so I'm not sure I'm really doing well in this.
So we know in terms of water bills, water and sewer bills, that many jurisdictions bill on a monthly basis. And advantages are twofold. It puts the residents on a level payment plan, more level payment plan. It also identifies water leaks quicker in terms of seeing a major variance. And we know that James City Service Authority is just transitioning from quarterly to monthly. Is there a way with our technology that we have now in terms of meter reading that we could actually have at least an internal check that would give a red flag if we're seeing a dramatic increase in water usage without having to bill on a monthly basis?
So thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Maslin. We actually just discussed this with the executive team. I'll answer your question, but I want to sort of go around the barn to get there. First of all, we do think it's a good idea to move to a monthly billing. We think that would be beneficial to the residents as well as to the city. It is a question of technology versus manpower, though, right now. We have a plan in place to replace meters with smart meters to make that easier. We think we're probably about a year away from being able to make that move. So hopefully, in a year's time, we'll be able to go to the monthly billing, which will give us better control over monitoring leakage. I can tell you that right now, though, we do a pretty good job of analyzing the bills and finding those anomalies. And Ms. Dameron can tell you, I'm familiar with numerous cases where people have called Finance Office and said, hey, I think I've got a leak. And Ms. Dameron exhaustively reviews the records to identify what the leak is, how much it might be, and then credit the account as best we can. So I think the answer is, yes, we do that to the best of our ability, but moving forward, we'll have much better control over it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to City Manager Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did want to just share one thing with you. You know, we did our projections for what the COVID-19 revenue losses might be for both FY '20 and FY '21. Council asked us to come back and report monthly on how we were performing against those projections. And so we've put together this table. I'm sure it will involve between now and next month because with the budget going on and many other things, we didn't have a tremendous amount of time to invest in this, but we did put it together for you so you can see how we're doing. So the good news is that if you skip all of the other numbers and just look at the variance of actual to projection, I think that's the number you're most interested in, is how are we performing relative to those projections? Now, as Barbara said, the important thing to note here, this is only considering revenue, this column. So we right now are $761,615 ahead of where we thought we would be in terms of revenue collection. But the cautionary note is the next column because what we've showing you there is how that number now impacts that forecasted deficit. And it has not decreased by $761,000. And the reason for that is because that number includes expected expenses. And so, yes, it's true, we have incurred some additional expenses associated with COVID-19. But the downside to showing you this data monthly is that month-to-month, our expenses and revenues fluctuate based on when payments are made, both by us and to us. And so what I would ask you to do is not pay a lot of attention to that revised end-of-year deficit number and sort of focus on that revenue number. Because I think in the end, that's where we need to be focused. As we finish out the fiscal year, the expenses and revenues associated with timing of payments will level out. And so what we need to be focused on is how the revenues are performing versus the reduced revenue estimates that we showed you earlier. And of course, Ms. Dameron can answer any questions about the chart.
Is it still fair to say that, given your worst-case scenario projection, we are at least to this point doing better than that?
Yes, absolutely. And we expected that, you know. Even as we were presenting the projections, we knew that the revenues were outperforming by some degree. And that's exactly what we want. You know, that's the whole purpose of the conservative estimate is so that when we finish the year, we're ahead of where we thought we would be and not worse. Because it's a lot easier to move forward than backwards.
And I'd just like to take note of that language because in Mr. Lane's remarks that were read by Ms. Felico, it almost came across as though he was suggesting, and I don't think he was saying that, but the way it was worded, it was almost as though he was saying that your projection of the impact of COVID-19 on our budget was conservative, when in reality, conservatism was coming from taking the worst-case scenario on the possible impact on revenues. And so we are still doing better than that.
That's right.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Trivet?
No, just a cautionary tale. You know, these numbers are reflective of a lag, I would assume, because we don't have current data. And so I do agree that we were very conservative in presenting in these numbers. And as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, that in terms of how far we will be down, we all anticipate we'll do better, we hope to do better, but we're still lagging a month or two, depending on types of revenue.
Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Maslin?
Yeah, a couple of questions on the last two lines there, Drew. So the sales tax for education, if you could confirm, so when we look in the budget book, the budget that we have published in terms of contribution to the school district was about $10.3 million. About 15% of that is derived from the sales tax for education. And we don't have any control over that. So whereas the other percent is coming from the general fund, which we do have control over. So if we were to look at the revised end-of-fiscal-year deficit for sales tax for education, which is saying $231,281, that's what we would be projecting that the school district would not be getting as a pass-through from the state. Is that correct?
That's right.
So that sort of clarifies that component there.
But I still just, I still do want to point out that, you know, a sales tax number could be down this month and not next month. So while we're showing this number this month, it's not going to compile, right? Because next month, it could perform better, and that number would be lower. So just, I just want everybody watching to keep that in mind.
And one other point to that that I think is worth noting. We in the city do as James City County does. We count that sales tax for education as part of our school's contribution. So when James City County is forecasting, I thought the latest number was a 10% reduction plus $300,000 or something to that effect. That 10% reduction is off of the total, including the state sales tax numbers. Would you agree with that, Mr. Trivet?
That's my understanding.
So the two don't compound each other. They are part of the same whole. But thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Maslin.
Okay, and now the last line, other revenue, which is really the second highest component in your chart there. Just intuitively, well, first, if you could talk about what makes up the other revenue. And it seems strange at the end of that line there, we say we've got a variance of actual projection of $487,360, yet our revised end-of-fiscal year is a lot less than that, $246. Is that timing? What's causing that disparity?
So I'll let Ms. Dameron answer that. The first version of this table was at least two pages long, and I felt like that was too much information. It would sort of water down the point. So I slimmed it down and grouped a lot of taxes and other types of revenues into this other revenue category. If you want to see the full expansion, we're happy to share that. But I'll let Ms. Dameron answer the question about why that is showing what it does. My guess is that it is timing.
Yes, I don't have that full expansion in front of me at the moment, but that other revenue makes up all revenues other than the specific ones listed. So that's parking fees, it's parks and rent fees. And a piece of that, certainly not anywhere close to $487,000, but we did have some refunds on parks and rent fees that were not factored into the initial projection. And then some of it is timing differences. So when I did the cash flow, I had to make assumptions about when I thought we'd see that revenue come in. And sometimes just a change in a day can throw a revenue stream from being in one month or the other. So we should start to see that even out as we get into May and June.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Ramsey, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, that takes us then to City Attorney Report.
Nothing today.
Do we have any unfinished business? No, that takes us to new business, and we have one item today. It's presentation and discussion of the Williamsburg Tourism Council's marketing strategy for the reopening of Williamsburg following COVID-19. Mr. Pons, would you like to make the introduction here?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's my pleasure to reintroduce to you all Vicky Semino, who, as you know, has come to us from New Hampshire. She's been here just over a year, having started April 15th last year. She's put together a real powerful team that's been doing a lot of work. And I know she's excited to share with you all some of that effort. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vicky.
Hey, well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's great to be able to talk to you all a little bit about sort of what's been going on behind the scenes. I kind of feel like we're the Wizard of Oz. Sometimes we're kind of the man behind the curtain. So it's great to be able to talk you through some of this. Let me attempt to share my screen with you. Hold on. Bear with me for just a moment, please. Okay, sorry about this. I don't know why it worked the other day. Is Mark on by chance?
I am. There you go. You've got it.
Do I have it now?
We see your screen now.
Okay, so if I do this, and then I do this.
There you go.
Am I good? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, you'd think I'd be a little better at this at this point with the seemingly thousands of Zoom calls that have taken place over the last two months. But just to kind of set the table a little bit, you know, it's no surprise that the hospitality industry has been one of the most, if not the most, impacted by the coronavirus. Oxford Economics, in an economic impact study produced in April, dictated that the travel industry in the U.S. would decline for the entire year by about 45% at a loss of about $519 billion. So those aren't pretty numbers by any stretch of the imagination. And again, that's a nationwide figure. You know, but literally every tourism destination on the planet is kind of working through recovery and what that looks like. So that being said, I do feel as though there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Longwoods, which is an industry-specific research company, produced a consumer sentiment study at the end of April, and there were some good tidbits to come out of that. So within the next six months, the sample that they polled said that 20% of the people who were part of their sample would travel within 200 miles. 19% would travel more than 200 miles, and 13% would travel by plane. So, you know, there are some tidbits of some positive thinking there. The good news for our destination is that, according to what our research partner has produced in consumer sentiment studies, that travelers view small towns, rural destinations, and national parks as predominantly safe. So all of those descriptors truly align perfectly with Greater Williamsburg. And so this, coupled with our geographic location, provides me with a strong level of confidence that our region will be uniquely positioned to build towards recovery once travel resumes. So, you know, there are some positive things to look forward to. So before I kind of take you through what we're planning for today and tomorrow, I did want to give a brief update on sort of what we have been working on pre-March 17th, which is essentially the day that kind of life changed for Visit Williamsburg as a destination marketing organization. So heading into spring, we were in great shape. We had hit 50% occupancy in 2019 for the first time since 2007. So that was a great kind of milestone. And we had just launched a spring effort that had run for about a month. You know, we had a strong budget. Our budget allocation for 2020's spring and summer campaign was about $5 million over 2019's budget allocation. So we were ready to kind of go guns blazing into spring and summer before, you know, things changed and we pulled our advertising and we had to adjust how we were going to function. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we were headed. So our target audiences would have been or were Gen Xers and millennials with children, Gen Xers and millennials without children, and then active mature. So our creative really swept across the breadth of product that exists here in Greater Williamsburg. So, you know, whether it's history, outdoor recreation, golf, food and beverage, we worked to showcase all of the sort of different product offerings that this area offers. From a target geography standpoint, we had worked to reach out to some new markets. Sort of pre-COVID, we were really focused on trying to drive route development into Newport News International Airport. And so we were really hoping to target some fly markets like Atlanta, Boston, Chicago. We had a number of different data points that showed that we already had strong visitation from these origin markets without doing any advertising. So we were excited to launch those markets. You know, as I mentioned earlier, though, as we were getting started, we had started to launch within our proven and our past success markets, but with lighter volume and, you know, sort of pulled that back in mid-March. At the time, it was hyper-focused on digital. We also included an influencer element. So what we wanted to do our first two months in market was to drum up buzz through, you know, digital influencers. That was a pretty significant part of our program. And we wanted to ensure trackability so that as we went into the fuller summer campaign, we were able to adjust and pivot as necessary. So you can sort of see the breakout of that allocation here. The spring campaign was intended to be a temporary one. We move forward with it, checks every box. Please keep in mind that we had a new ad agency that we were onboarding. And so we really wanted to get into market. so we really wanted to get into market as quickly as possible and developed what I think was a thoughtful campaign, but wanted to kind of keep both tracks running at the same time where we're in market with something that works, that tested well. But then, at the same time, we were putting together a larger campaign that had some wear-in for years to come. So it checks every box. It really focused around whatever you're looking for. You know, Williamsburg has it. And, you know, you can see here that although this was a campaign that was meant to last two months, there were so many pieces of creative involved. You know, four landing pages, sixty seven different digital banner ads, email blasts, you know, this was certainly a labor of love to get out the door by mid-February. And it was performing. So we were out in market two and a half weeks ahead of twenty nineteen. And again, that was despite having a brand-new advertising agency onboard. We saw a thirty percent increase in engagement. Our impressions were up, social was up, we were we were firing on all cylinders. And then March seventeenth happened. And that's kind of when we, as every other destination in the country and probably on the planet, needed to kind of pull our advertising efforts way back. We needed to focus, well, we really needed to shift our focus. We needed to become an information resource. We needed to become a communication channel, and we needed to continue to build those marketing and sales efforts for later on in calendar year twenty twenty. So as far as an information resource goes, we launched a microsite, visit Williamsburg.gov/coronavirus, and we started to send out twice-weekly emails to industry suppliers. And so this twice-weekly email that would go out to provide updates on what had been posted, what new information, what new research, what new CARES Act resources had been posted to visit Williamsburg.com. So, you know, that microsite, which, by the way, you know, we've got a very small team compared to other organizations with our budget, and our resource page is comparable to that of Visit Californias, who literally, they've got, you know, a hundred people on staff. So our little team really worked hard to get this microsite up and running, and it's updated literally every day with new information. It was also an opportunity to become a communication resource. So we are in the process of collapsing down several different sort of back-end software, different softwares where so we've got, you know, a software for our industry. We've got a, you know, for our industry database. We've got a software for our client database. We've got a software for our consumer database. So we are in the process right now of collapsing four, probably close, actually five, when I think about it, different disparate data sources into one data source. And so by the numbers, our group has been on the horn. Our sales team, they have a minimum of thirty five client calls. So that's dealing with tour operators, receptive operators. Those are folks who are really more on the sales side. So our sales team has a minimum of thirty five points of contact that need to be made every single day. We've sent out sixteen industry newsletters. We've updated industry records. We've really taken this opportunity to clean up some pretty serious database issues that existed with this organization in its various forms over the years. So there there is, you know, a lot of work that's been going on in the backend on that front, too. We also adjusted our social media approach. We moved away from images featuring larger groups of people, you know, obviously didn't want to appear to be tone deaf. We went towards scenic landscapes. We went towards encouraging followers to take in the views from the comfort of their own homes. And we also encouraged and highlighted virtual tours provided by suppliers throughout the area. So this is just a glimpse at how our social media strategy shifted, which was pretty dramatic, again, kind of on the turn of a dime. So we developed a bridge campaign. We are the only DMO in the state to be running TV. This launched in May, early May, in coordination with National Travel and Tourism Week. Our focus was a little bit different than sort of some of the other bridge spots that you may see that other destinations have produced. Our focus was really about we'll be together again soon. And the idea that people are craving to be social and to be around other people again, and that we've just got the most beautiful, unique backdrop to make that happen. And so I would like to share with you the spot. I am hoping that it doesn't, if the music, for whatever reason, echoes, I'm just going to fast forward to the next slide, and I will send this to you after we get off the horn here today. But I'm going to attempt to share this fifteen-minute spot that we've got running in all three major DMAs throughout Virginia and Washington, DC. So I'll play that for you again, because it is short. It's only fifteen seconds, so you can really kind of get a feel for it. Or maybe not. Okay, there he goes. You know, when he puts his headphones on, he's excited. So with that spot, we were really careful to select video that didn't include large crowds, that included a lot of the attributes that consumers are looking for. Consumers don't want to be around, you know, big crowded environments. They want some assurance that they're going to a place that has provided for a level of safety, things like scenic drives, outdoor recreation, again, small towns, national parks. So we were very careful in how we selected video for that short spot. But that is running right now. And, you know, we've seen quite a bit of traffic to our website as a result of that, which is which is good. We also launched, in coordination with National Travel and Tourism Week, a local effort. This was really to acknowledge that tourism is a lifeblood of our community. And this was not your normal National Tourism Week. And so we worked to point folks and stakeholders to our COVID resources page. We really wanted to remind people that, you know, although they might not see us kind of in the background, we're there getting ready to turn that marketing machine on. And so here's just a couple of examples of what the creative looked like. And again, it really, I'll let you kind of go through this as your leisure, but the idea is that, you know, we're going to work to stay as safe as possible today, and we'll stay focused on economic recovery for tomorrow. So that was really more of a local effort, again, to engage the community and to provide some level of understanding that there is this organization that is doing the work regardless. So research is something that we've taken the kind of the last two months. We've been really focused on ramping up on all things research. We engaged in literally more than twelve research projects, everything from a consumer perception study to campaign testing. We had nine focus groups just in the last couple of weeks. We've been contracting different consumer sentiment studies along the way to ensure that we're going out with creative that will speak to what consumers want to hear as things begin to reopen. And so there's been a ton of activity going on on the research front, and it's driven everything that we've done on the creative side. And so we have been working towards new creative, a campaign that I hope will be around for at least a few years. Our creative platform is really focused on reuniting with what truly matters. And this resonated and resonated with our consumer testing panels as something that's not just specific to currently, but has wear-in for down the road. It's, you know, it's a complex world, and there is strain involved in just sort of your everyday life. And Williamsburg is a safe and relaxing escape from that, and it offers a place where it's not complicated, and you can reunite with what is important to you. And, you know, that that varies from person to person, right? Like, what is important to me? Well, you know, certainly getting my hair done soon, and dining and shopping and things like that, outdoor recreation, you know, everybody has sort of that different idea of what matters to them. And so I'm excited to share this campaign and this creative with the Williamsburg Tourism Council on Tuesday at our meeting at one o'clock. I will remind everybody that is a public meeting, so you are all welcome to attend. Drew, both Drew and Vice Mayor Pons have the agenda, so which includes kind of the Zoom and login information. So please feel free to join. We're, we did have to make some adjustments, as you might think. We dropped a lot of the newer markets that were meant to be more fly markets. So we dropped Atlanta, we dropped Boston, we dropped Chicago. We did keep Cleveland and Columbus. Cleveland and Columbus, those designated market areas are really high numbers for us. And again, we haven't had much of a marketing effort there as far as, you know, the destination marketing organization is concerned. So we did keep those. It is drivable. And I guess I can speak as being, you know, someone whose family vacationed here and drove down from Akron, Ohio, and, you know, spent some time in Williamsburg. You know, it's drivable market still. And what all of our research is showing is that people will drive further than they would have been willing to drive in the past, just to avoid getting on a plane. So New York City, it's it's got an asterisk next to it. That there's a lot of unknowns there. And it really is about their ability to travel out of sort of Manhattan and the tri-state areas. So they still have some fairly significant restrictions. And we're, we're ready when it makes sense for that market if, you know, and we're just going to kind of play that one by ear. But everything else, we're going to go live and move forward with that, and that will happen on June one. So our media channel approach, it's very similar to what you saw for our spring effort, except this includes roughly forty-three percent of our budget dedicated to TV. And that would be kind of hyper-targeted per DMA. We're literally, you know, any of you who have worked in marketing know that you go through and you literally pick your time slot and your day slot that you want to focus on. So in addition to kind of what you see on your screen, we're also going to dedicate roughly five hundred thousand dollars of our marketing budget to cooperative advertising. So what does that mean? Well, we've selected two different outlets, TripAdvisor and Adara. And it ranges anywhere from a five thousand dollar program to a twenty-five thousand dollar program. But if a private sector business would like to participate in this program, they can connect with one of those two outlets. They will have to use our templated creative. It will be digital so that we're able to track it and ensure that, you know, it was working and functioning the way it should have. It will go to their website, and if they don't have a website, they're listing on visitWilliamsburg.com. And, you know, it's a good sort of foyer into stretching out some of the DMO's funds to help support private sector businesses who may not be able to afford to go at it alone. And so we'll match what their investment might be, and we'll see how it goes. You know, we're starting small, but it is an effort to support our local suppliers. So I'm excited to see how that goes. We'll roll that out early next week. We'll also be producing a local dine and retail campaign that will launch probably early June here, as restaurants and retail establishments kind of get their feet on the ground. And hopefully, we'll be at phase two at that point. We'll kind of stay focused focused on, you know, our local media outlets. But again, that will be just a nice way to encourage, you know, folks who live here to ensure that they're taking advantage of all the great food that exists. And I, for one, know that I have really missed going out for a nice dinner. So and, you know, I like to think I'm a great cook, but I've been kind of doing more frozen dinners than anything else, which isn't that fun. So in addition to kind of what we're doing on the, oh, before I move on, this is, and it's going to be hard for you to see, but this is our media Gantt chart. This will give you all an idea, the specific media channels specifically around digital. So you'll see that we're using a lot of trade desks where we're able to retarget visitors who have already come to our website, who have clicked through to our ads. So but again, through programs like Adara, we'll be even, we'll be able to track even more than that. We'll be able to track who clicks on a digital display ad, and then who goes on to book either airfare, probably not that many, or lodging in this area. So we can get that granular with how our advertising is performing. And we've only added new tactics that allow for that sort of granularity. So in addition to all of this, we kicked off a redevelopment of our website, the redevelopment of our website. So that happened in January. Right now, we're in the discovery phase. We'll soon be going on to what our new navigation looks like, what the new user experience looks like. You know, we're blowing up visitWilliamsburg.com, and we're essentially starting over. So we will be using a new software program to us. It is called Simple View, and it serves not only as a content management system, it also serves as a customer relationship management system, so that our sales team is able to use that same platform in communicating with clients who are focused on things like meetings, associations, sports. So we're really streamlining sort of what the backend looks like. And I think the user experience will be a significant improvement because of that. And so speaking of sales, we've got a robust plan that we're going to put forward to the Tourism Council on Tuesday to show the different shows that we plan to go to. We've got sort of a month-by-month breakout of phone blitzes, trade shows, sales calls and events, and reigniting active participation in professional organizations that we've been missing from for quite some time. So a lot of the retooling that we've done in the background will allow for us to kind of hit the ground running here in July, so that Q three and Q four of twenty twenty are filled with aggressive sales campaigns. We are just wrapping up, and I had hoped to be done with procurement after my first year on the job. But we, hopefully, before the end of the month, we're out to bid right now for legal services and public relations. PR, we have received fifteen written proposals. We've narrowed it down to a small number of organizations that have been invited back to present. Obviously, that will be through Zoom. That won't be in person. And we received two proposals for legal services. And so we're hopefully going to finalize scoring on that in the not-too-distant future as well. So in addition to all of this, I did want to highlight quickly, because this was presented at our March seventeenth Tourism Council meeting, but we did participate, or I shouldn't say participate, we put forward an ad effectiveness study. And really, what this measures is advertising impact. So what we need to be able to do is tell our stakeholders, which is you and everybody else within the historic triangle, what our what our tourism marketing efforts produced in terms of incremental travel. So we don't want to tell you about the people who would have come to Greater Williamsburg, whether we existed or not. We want to tell you about the people who came to Greater Williamsburg because they saw our ads and they were motivated to book travel. And so long and the short, we had a sample size of nearly 4,000 folks, which is fairly significant for those of you who have ever been involved in political polling. That's a pretty decent sample size in our key target geographic markets. And so really what we focused on is who saw our advertising and did it motivate them to book travel? And so out of 11 million households, 4.4 million recalled our advertisements. And of those, 4.4 million people, out of the 11 million people in the key geographic area that we had targeted, 350,000 households traveled to Williamsburg. And so you can kind of see this is a great overview of the chart. So with 350,000 households traveling to Williamsburg because they saw our advertising, they spent roughly around $1,100 per household while they were here. So ultimately, that produced $405 million in influenced spending and roughly $14 million in tax impact. And that's in the historic triangle alone. That's the three municipalities. So bottom line, what we measured was for every dollar we spent in media in 2019, which was $4.7 million, we saw a return of $3 in the form of tax revenue. So, you know, I think that that's a positive story to share. And the full study is available. I'm happy to send it to you. And if you'd like even a deeper dive, I'm happy to coordinate a conference call with our third-party research partner. Again, they're Smari Insights out of California or out of Indianapolis. And they handle destinations like California, Texas, Illinois, Florida, and so on. So, um, I know that I'm probably approaching my time limit here. So I will end it there and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Semino. We appreciate the presentation and the creative that you shared with us. I'm going to come to my colleagues. Mr. Pons, I can't imagine you have too many questions, but we'll start with you.
Well, I don't. I did, first, I just wanted to thank Vicki. I think that was, in terms of an explanation of data and research, one of the best, best efforts we've seen in a number of years. Typically, we do just get the shiny commercial campaigns and some talk about where we're going. But so I really appreciate that you were able to take the time to do that. I'm glad that you have, have some team and good partners that helped you develop a good marketing strategy. Still kind of blown away that we're tracked on our cell phones.
Highly, yeah.
Where everybody knows what you're doing, where you're going, and what restaurant you're, you're in. So, um, so that's good information. But with that, I guess that allows you information on the fly. Does that help you or hurt you in terms of being nimble to adjust your marketing campaigns to different geograph, targeted to different geographic areas? Or can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, so we used a couple of different, even in selecting key target markets for the initial summer campaign and then sort of the phase, the phase two, the secondary kind of version of the summer campaign. And so, you know, both with Adara and knowing where the bulk of people who were booking were coming from, there's also a company called Uber Media. And so we're actually able to geo-fence different attractions and areas throughout the region and see what, you know, the cell phones origin area might be. So we're literally tracking people based on their phone numbers in these geo-fenced areas. And so it does help us to refine where we want to go. And we're not kind of just, you know, shooting fish in a barrel. It's based on, okay, here are the top 10 designated market areas where people in this geo-fenced area were coming from. And so it does provide some interesting insights, things, you know, along the lines of people who travel from farther away tend to go to Colonial Williamsburg and then places like Busch Gardens, where people within a smaller drive radius, you know, kind of will go for like a Busch Gardens primarily. And so it gives us some insight into traveler behavior patterns, too.
Good. In terms of research and data, I appreciate the opportunity to see some of that. Will there be a public component to Visit Williamsburg where residents in Williamsburg can go on and see that data?
Yeah, in fact, it's live now and I neglected to mention that. So I can send around the link to everyone. We've been posting all of our research programs as they've been, as they've been completed.
Good. I won't ask any more questions, but thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Vicki, thank you so much for being here today and for your excellent presentation. I joined the Vice Mayor, although I served in my tenure much briefer than the Vice Mayor has and some of the other members of council. In my, in my one term here, it's, this is probably the best presentation I've ever seen with regard to metrics, some sort of accountability and infrastructure with regard to ads in our marketing plan. So if anything, you know, there's been a lot of talking, perhaps maybe even one might say controversy when we had developed a tourism council, but it seems to be working. You know, you've got data experts who are, who are good at this who has, who have the background and putting the science behind what we're doing and the dollars. So really appreciate you. If anyone's tuning in, this should only serve to just affirm the fact that perhaps we have made the right call to pursue tourism structure and tourism council structure and a business council structure. I'm retiring, so I can say stuff like that. I guess you had a very lengthy and very detailed presentation. And I think based on how I've observed a lot of these presentations in the past is that, you know, we might have, I might hear from resident, one resident that says, oh, that ad creative, I could have done something like that. They might nitpick at certain different aspects. But I want to remind folks and maybe take this from the 10,000 foot down that you have implemented data-driven analysis to reaching these folks. And I think that's crucially important, especially now with this pandemic. And I think it's really wise as well that you're going ahead and being proactive and investing some of those dollars now where people are staying home. Because what are we doing when we're staying home? We're scrolling through, I'm just looking at your discovered media channel approaches. We're scrolling through Instagram, I know I am. We're scrolling through Facebook and that's something that we keep in mind. So there's a science to that. I totally agree with your approach and I think that's a great thing to do with that. I'm curious about though, to get your take, since you're the expert, I'm not, about what this pandemic will shift in terms of a marketing approach. And, and I say this maybe from a narrow stance of my age demographic. I have a TV, but I don't have cable anymore, right? I go on YouTube and I guess you can get a subscription. I doubt many people my age do to block those ads, right? To make it ad-free when they're on it. I do know also there's a lot of folks and influencers, kind of what you were talking about on Instagram and on Facebook. Do you see that shift from, to your slide about media channel approach, from a pure discovery platform moving on to maybe consideration action just based on those two platforms alone? I know Instagram has, you know, over 95 million content uploaded each day. You know, that's, that's a lot. So where do you see with all of that?
So I think it's generational, I really do. So I am Gen X and I'm a Facebook person, right? And I'm going to guess you're a millennial and you're an Insta person. And it really is, it's matching up sort of your, your generational kind of what you're apt to use in terms of media channels with being out there in all of those channels. And so the idea is you're delivering up the information that people want, when they want it, how they want it. And so that's why so much of our program is digitally based. And then that's also why from a television perspective, so it's not just your typical broadcast, you know, you're, we're going to run an ad during the Wheel of Fortune. That's, that, it's going to be also digitally based streaming channels that we'll be running on. And because of the nature of those streaming channels and because we know what people are drawn to in terms of programming, we're able to then even hyper-target them even more because we're able to serve up. So if you watch a lot of travel shows or you watch, you know, historic shows or, you know, any, anything like that, well, you, you might have an added, an aptitude to travel to a place like Williamsburg. So, you know, it really is, and I think that that is the difference. You know, 20 plus years ago, when I first started doing this, it was you brand TV on broadcast television channels and you put some print ads in different magazines. And you had, you know, a limited number of creative. Now we have literally hundreds of pieces of creative because they're so hyper-targeted. So, and so the influencers are a big part of that. You know, we, we need to kind of talk about the cool factor and the buzz. And so to align ourselves with the right influencers is going to be a big part of that program. And also, and I neglected to mention this, we're going to run a content partnership with Nat Geo and golf. And so part of that will be content creation. They'll send an influencer here to really experience the destination. I, I think golf is one of the most, I, I don't know that people know the caliber of golf that exists in this area. So, so, you know, getting that granular, that's probably a long-winded way to answer your question, but.
Right, and that sounds almost like a very high, top-notch political operation as well with the hyper-targeting. But to your point, for folks who are tuning in and may not understand what influences are on the Instagram platform, that means you have like over 10,000 followers and you'll do branded partnerships with someone like Visit Williamsburg. And you have over 10,000 followers or even in some cases, over hundreds of thousand followers. They will see that content and because they like that content and that person, that influencer, they're going to want to visit somewhere like Williamsburg because of that. That, I think, just to our point, recapping something that's captured in my generation, the millennials and maybe even Gen Xers. Let me ask you this as a follow-up then, Vicki. And this is my last question, it's a pretty broad question. So we've got this heavily granular approach and this whole infrastructure you've laid out, right? And obviously, you can, you can probably lean to the current past few months to, to answer this. But with this platform, how easy is it for you to, to shift or to adjust or to adapt to all these, you know, different circumstances? It could be something as, as, as easy as TikTok, right? This new app, it's caught on fire. You know, how easy is it for you to adjust from something like that? A new platform that's, that's really caught on fire? Not literally, but then, you know, to something like a global pandemic, right? That's significantly altering and perhaps going to affect long-term how people are going to travel. I know you touched that, but I'd like to get your two cents on that. Appreciate all that you've done.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Thank you. I, um, it makes it really easy to adjust the campaign. You know, we're able to monitor. And so, you know, we've built a, a performance dashboard in the background that literally has every piece of creative linked to it so that we can see how it's performing. And if it's not performing, we can change it, we can pull it. We, you know, we can adjust, we can change, you know, the emphasis that we're putting on a particular keyword. Or, you know, if an image isn't working, but we see that, you know, another image is working really well on a different channel, we're able to switch that out. So as, you know, as much as the volume has changed over the course of the last, you know, two-plus decades in terms of what you produce for creative, it gives you a lot of flexibility at the same time, so.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, Vicki, for your presentation. I think not only does it show that we've got the right kind of marketing campaign, but we also have the right person behind that campaign. You bring together not only data-driven, but you address all different kinds of, of content and demographic groups. And so I appreciate what you're doing. The only question I had is perhaps the same as what Mr. Zhang asked. And maybe this just shows my lack of familiarity with influencers and things like that. But on streaming TV series, like something on Netflix or Hulu, how do you insert ads into a series, episodes?
It's, it's more based, that's a great question. It's not, it's particularly with streaming, what you're looking at is viewers' habits, not necessarily the show in particular. You're looking at their, their, their search habits. And, and so what they typically watch different, you know, and because they're, because it's, you know, it's super creepy, but great when you're a marketer, we're able to then also follow how they search for other pieces of information. So it's more based on the consumer and their habits that we choose the show, if that makes sense.
Somewhat.
It's more, it's more about the viewer than the show itself.
But there is a large component of, of funding that's set aside for TV.
Yes, and that is both traditional broadcast and streaming.
Okay, so there are ways to insert advertisements into streamed shows because whenever I have it, you can watch this with an ad or something. I typically click over that, but.
Yeah, you bet. And, you know, typically what we buy is the, the inability to click over us.
Well, that's good. I'm glad we're not getting jumped over and that they sort of have to see us.
Yeah.
And, and I think your presentation also answers a lot of questions that people have had in the community of, okay, what is Williamsburg going to, to do? And how are we going to adapt? And who is our target audiences? And how can we get people to start coming back here, particularly the locals? And so I appreciate the flexibility and also the adaptability of the, of the campaign to what's been going on now. So I'll join you for that, for that drink once we're able to get together again.
I'm in, I'm in.
Yeah, Vicki, hey, thanks for the presentation. Couple of questions and comments, maybe to give some context to one of our emails that was sent regarding Colony Williamsburg and the $1.3 million grant and the different activities that, that they plan to put on, many of which, you know, other towns or cities would be taking out of their budget to, to self-perform those. I remember in New Hampshire, some years ago, 4th of July, traditional fireworks in a colonial tourist town. And just before the fireworks were to take off, we had a huge thunder lightning storm, which was actually more dramatic than the fireworks ever would be. And so what the town did, and in this case, the town actually pays for the fireworks themselves, they actually took that 4th of July event and moved it to Labor Day weekend. Looking at, what's your thought in terms of 4th of July here? And do you think we'll still have the activities? And could we pivot that to a different holiday if, if it doesn't work?
I, my personal person, I hope we have the activities. I, I think that people are so looking forward to seeing fireworks again. I know just the other day when the flyover took place.
Right.
You know, I was kind of on my deck and the neighbors next door and they had all of their little kids in the back of their pickup and they were, you know, it was, it was just so nice for everybody to experience something traditional and normal. And so from my personal perspective, gosh, I, I hope it happens because I think that a lot of people would love to participate in something that feels traditional.
Oh, thank you. So looking at the recent Peach State experiment, I circulated to colleagues an article from one of my neighbors from the Washington Post last week about how when they opened up early, they were swamped and there was the cell phones that gave the documentation as to how many people were coming in to visit them. With us opening up with the rest of the Commonwealth, but however, Northern Virginia delaying by weeks, do you think there'll be a natural push for, for people coming down from Northern Virginia to, to get away from there and look at us opening up?
I, I do. And it kind of goes back to some of the data that I cited at the beginning of my presentation that, you know, 20% of my presentation that, you know, 20% of who Longwood polled said that they would be willing to drive up to 200 miles. 19% said I'd be willing to drive more than 200 miles. And I think, you know, from Visit Williamsburg's perspective, because like it's going to be a new normal. It's not going to be like we're going to flip the switch and it'll be like it was a year ago today or a year ago last June. So I think from our perspective, we need to be a great source of information for consumers to understand what's open and for them to understand what sort of measures have been put into place to help keep people safe as they're enjoying our tourism product. So, you know, I, but again, I think that we are uniquely positioned, just given our geography and the makeup of what we have to offer, being sort of a small town with a lot of open-air activities, with a lot of outdoor recreation, combined with, you know, museums and cultural experiences. And I've always thought this about Williamsburg, you know, all of the ingredients are there. And so I think we are uniquely positioned to recover once travel resumes.
The, looking at your crystal ball, what do you see as the future for the Newport News Williamsburg Airport? You know, we've, we've lost Delta, we still have American, is it going to be able to recover?
I, I truly hope so. They've got a full executive director there who's worked very hard. And I, I truly hope so because it's a great little airport. It's, it's definitely my preference when I have to travel.
What are your projections for Busch Gardens and, and Water Country, USA, and maybe would the Water Country open up earlier, do you think?
I think they're working through that in real time. I, you know, I, I think that, I think that most attractions throughout the country, throughout the world, are working through what the new normal looks like. And, you know, some people have landed on what they're going to put forward already and just some haven't yet. So I think it's, I, I think there's good people at the helm of Busch Gardens and Water Country. And I'm confident that they'll put forward a solid plan.
What about, in terms of the tourism industry, are you seeing destinations being rated by a COVID index at all? Any information coming in and to what degree COVID has spread in there and how does that affect pulling in visitors?
Well, I think, you know, this is not a great time to be a large metropolitan tourism destination, right? So I think that, I think that our recovery looks a lot different because of that, because we're not, you know, in a situation where it's crowds and crowds and, you know, it's, it's, it's very different for us, which I think, again, goes back to why I believe our destination to be uniquely positioned to recover as things start to open up again.
Is there an opportunity to partner with William &amp; Mary Admissions and Alumni Association? You know, unfortunately, most of the junior high school students out there have missed their college tours. And William &amp; Mary's done a great job in terms of virtual tours. But is there an ability to maybe use some of our students to actually convey the message to high school students and their families, especially maybe legacy students, that this is the time to come and visit, you know, once we open up?
Yeah. And actually, I connected with a couple of folks over there last month, I guess. And so our plan is to, let's talk about some of the no-brainer, low-hanging fruit opportunities that exist for us to talk through. Like, you know, when there's an alumni event coming up, it, it makes a ton of sense for us to put a communication that, you know, alumni or Parents Weekend, or there, there's so many kind of no-brainer opportunities that exist there. And so once kind of we're back in the office and all of that, I know that some further discussions will take place along those lines.
And my last question is, I may have missed that. What was going on with the baseline study? Did, did we ever complete that? And how do we use it now? Do we, is there a handicap for COVID that we, we take into consideration?
Well, so the ad effectiveness return on investment study is kind of what I went through at the end of my presentation. So, and I'll send around a link so that everybody has that because it is pretty lengthy. And again, anybody who would like a further deep dive into, you know, that was conducted, the methodology used, I'm happy to set that up. You know, it'll be interesting to see what COVID produces. It's still, you know, kind of going back to some of your budget discussions earlier. It's kind of, you know, from the sales tax perspective, that lags two months. So we still don't have a real complete picture on what that's going to look like for the month of April. Transient tax, same thing. So it's certainly going to give us the closest thing to a baseline of not a whole lot of activity going on, I, you know, that we could probably get, if that makes sense.
All right. So one more question. What about, what do you see in terms of the convention business? Because that's a big, that's an important business for Williamsburg. And how do you see conventions going from here?
So we hired a sales director back in January. Her name is Julia Smith Young, and she had served as the sales director of the Orlando Convention and Visitors Bureau for about a decade. And Julia brings with her just a ton of experience, a lot of great ideas. Unfortunately, kind of when all of this started to come to fruition, we put a hold on hiring. You know, we want to add some sales positions after we get back on our feet and all of that. But she does have an aggressive sales plan at play that she would like to pursue. And conventions, small conventions, I mean, we're never going, we're not Las Vegas, right? But, but we can host conventions, we can host association meetings, we can host incentive travel. So there are, you know, six different areas within the sales category that we can focus on and we plan to focus on.
But that, that seems to be more conventional thoughts. What about, what's your pulse that you're taking with the corporate travel departments as to when they're actually going to allow employees to travel again?
Well, quite honestly, there hasn't been much of a corporate travel sales effort for this destination for as long as I can tell. So we're starting baseline with a lot of that. Business travel is going to be the last to bounce back. That's, that's no question. But it's going to bounce back. You know, I think that there are a lot of folks who will miss that face-to-face meeting time. And quite honestly, business travel went through this after 9/11. Business travel has gone through this before. And, you know, I am confident that at some point, not as fast as consumer, but at some point, some of these different categories will come back.
Okay, thank you.
Here.
Ms. Semino, thank you very much for your presentation. I think you can tell from the reaction of my colleagues that we all very much appreciate the work that you and your colleagues are doing and the progress that you're making. So none of us can tell the future, but it looks as though you've got a good plan for how we're going to address the different possibilities that occur and how we can best take advantage of the opportunities as they arise. Just one comment and two questions. I too want to applaud you for staying in-market with a reminder presence because that's so important. People do not think about their vacation the week before they take it. They, they may not pull the trigger on some things until much later in the time horizon than in years past. But they're processing information throughout. And so taking advantage of this time when people are looking for a distraction other than what's on the news every day, that in some ways is not as bright and encouraging as your advertising spot, gives, gives them something to look forward to and, and really to then internalize and hopefully to act upon. So my two questions are, the first being, looking at the tax return on investment of $3.02 per dollar, sounds very good to me. So $3.02 of tax income per $1 spent on advertising. What have you seen as a good benchmark tax ROI in other destinations where you've worked?
So that's kind of a hard question for me to answer because for, you know, my past two major destination experiences, it was state tax revenue. So in New Hampshire, you know, it was meals and rooms tax revenue, but that was statewide. And that was roughly $14 to every dollar spent. So it's an apples and oranges kind of scenario. For a destination like this, where you see a $3 return in the form of tax revenue for every dollar spent, and it's such a small geographic area, and it's really two taxes that we're talking about, it's sales tax and transient tax. From what Smari has told me, we range in the good to excellent range. And that's included in the chart that I had left in as, I think it's the second to last slide, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And do you see new video material coming out, new, other, beyond the 15-second spot? And if so, just a few words about what they might be and when?
So we will launch, you know, 30-second television spots and 15-second television spots as our summer effort. And that will launch in June and it will go through August. Fall is kind of TBD right now. Really, what we're kind of planning for in the background is like, our hope is that our ad campaign will never end, that we won't have any moments of shade moving forward. We, you know, we were able to, by holding on quite a bit of programming when I first started to evaluate, by holding on hiring and doing that in a thoughtful process, we're in a financial situation where we're, we're going to be okay. And so we will continue to run television, we will continue to run streaming advertisements, and we'll be able to kind of keep up those budget spends. We do need to film more. We are at a serious deficit for assets. And so, gosh, the second half of last year, we had three different photo shoots. And I, you know, after it's okay to do so, I'd like to do another coming year because we're missing categories of our target market in our video and photography. So that is my hope, and that has been budgeted for through our advertising agency. So, yeah, in addition to that, we'll continue to run video on places like Pandora and, you know, some of those other streaming channels.
Well, thank you again for being with us today. We all very much appreciate it. Any final questions from Ms. Semino? Okay, well, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And I am going to leave the meeting, like.
Goodbye.
Okay, thank you all. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.
This takes us to the, assuming that nothing else we need to talk about under new business today, anybody? This takes us to open forum. Do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, sir.
We'll wait just a moment, see if anybody calls in. While we're waiting, does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make? I guess that's no. Okay, we do not have anybody calling in. Do we have anything for closed session, Mr. Pons?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.